This is the regular meeting of the Geneva 304 Board of Education for Monday, May 12th, 2025. I'd like to welcome everyone here. This is quite an audience. We haven't had a group like this since we asked everybody to wear a mask. Having said that, Bonnie, what do you call the role?
Here.
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 Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right there, and I will lead it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you'd like to register your attendance, there is an attendance sheet in the lobby which you're welcome to sign. Item two on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have both the regular session and the executive session for April 28th. Bonnie, did you receive any corrections or additions? Does anybody have any corrections or additions at this time? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Molly Anne Sari.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the Board of Education reorganization. This is not a normal part of the board meeting. It only happens after an election, and it's been a while after the election. But this is where we, in open meeting, elect officers and proceed with the business of the board. As current president, the first thing we do is I will entertain a motion to accept the clerks, the county clerks' vote tally. So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. The next item is the Oath of Office. Now, this is the longest oath of office I've ever heard, and all the new members and existing members can all say it. I'll read it and you repeat after me. So, "I, R. El Kabine, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Geneva Community Unit District 304 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability." Can you do that?
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Geneva Community Unit School District 304 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
All right, I'll break it into smaller bits here. "I further swear that..."
"I further swear that..."
"...I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets."
"I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets."
"I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees."
"I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees."
"I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public meeting."
"I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting."
"And I shall abide by the majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels."
"I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels."
"As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district."
"As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the district."
"I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for the Geneva Community Unit School District 304."
"I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for the Geneva Community Unit School District 304."
"I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designated to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework."
"I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environmental design to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework."
"I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of students' achievement and all other conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with straight state law."
"I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of students' achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law."
"I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Geneva Community Unit School District 304."
"I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Geneva Community Unit School District 304."
"And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision of the board. The board has created fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development."
"I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision of the board. It has created fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development."
Thank you all. So we've completed the oath of office. The next is the election of officers. The Open Meetings Act requires the election of officers be done by open vote, not secret ballot. And someone needs to serve as president pro tem, and all things considered, I'll volunteer for that job if that's agreeable to everybody.
Sure.
The appointment of a president pro tem, that's me. Any seated board members can serve as... The president of the board is the first officer to be elected and immediately assumes the duties of the chair to preside over the election of other officers. Nominations?
I'll nominate Larry Kabine to be the president for this term.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nominations are closed. That makes it pretty simple. Bonnie, would you call the vote? Oh, we don't have to? Okay.
Tag you in.
Well, thank you all. Appreciate that. So the board president is now elected. We have other officers to elect, and nominations don't require a second, just as it goes. I'm gonna make a suggestion. This is really a very good board, and the people who are elected were on the board before. Is it possible that we could go ahead to affirm the position unless someone has an office that they do not wish to continue in? Jackie, are you happy being vice president? The secretary might be a little bit interesting because we're gonna have to step up on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we'll need to do a vote on the secretary and probably reaffirm the treasurer vote as well.
Okay. So continuing then, I will, just, if we only got one, we can do, I'll nominate Jackie Forbes as vice president. Are there any other nominations?
For vice president?
Yes. Okay, we don't have to, I'll vote, no other nominations? You're number two? Congratulations. Secretary, that's a position which has not been held by a board member in the past because of a unique set of circumstances that we won't go into, but I believe we should have a secretary. And just as an explanation, the role of the secretary is merely to verify that the minutes are correct. Mrs. Johnson will continue to take the minutes as usual. Would anyone like to be secretary who doesn't have an office at this time or doesn't want another office? Everybody's...
Was this the case where we were gonna nominate Bonnie?
That's what I was gonna say. The recording secretary can also be, not serve formally as the board secretary, so if someone would...
So I'll nominate Bonnie to be the recording secretary and the secretary.
That's someone. Okay, any other nominations? I have a feeling there's not gonna be one. Congratulations, Bonnie. And treasurer.
This is... Yeah, uh-huh. No such luck, Todd.
I don't know, Todd. I think...
I nominate Mr. Latham.
Yes. Any other nominations? Congratulations. This is what happens when you have a really good group of people working together well.
Agreed.
So congratulations to everyone. I'm very happy with the result of this election. Okay. Item four is recognition awards, presentations, and public...
Three points.
Am I skipping one?
Yeah, we need to do a couple. We need to...
See, I was so excited.
Revote item three point four, the board calendar and some of those things.
Okay, I stand corrected. We have reviewed the calendar, and I believe it's in board book as well. Are there any additions or changes to the calendar?
Motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Committee and liaison assignments. I believe you have them from the past, and is there anyone who is unsatisfied with their current assignment or would like to take on additional assignments for committee and liaison?
Take on something different.
Okay.
I don't know whether it's something that rotates or, you know, some relatively new, but there are some things that, you know, I'd like to try to offer my insight or whatever I can.
Okay.
I wonder if this might be a timely conversation because we have a retreat, a board retreat coming up later this week, and that might be an opportunity for the whole team to have some of that discussion. So I would propose maybe we table this?
Yeah.
And then have some discussion at the board retreat, if that sounds okay to everybody?
It sounds good.
Yes, I was gonna suggest the same. And can we review and make sure that these are all current active committees or...
Yeah, good call.
Or liaisons?
Yeah, some of those are kind of longstanding, you know, names and groups that maybe don't exist anymore. So we'll take a look at that too before our retreat.
Thank you all. Now on to item four, recognition awards, presentations, and public hearings. Item one is the tradition of excellence. GHS students, Principal Tom Rogers will present.
Thanks for coming up, Mr. Rogers. So many students to recognize today. We'll have the board come around the table here. Students, when Mr. Rogers calls your name, start on this end with Mr. Choi, and then work your way down the line. And ultimately, when we have your big group all ready to go, we'll have you pose up here in front of our sweet banner, and Mr. Baker will take a great picture. So take it away, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett. Thank you to the board for the opportunity to recognize students who have done great things recently at Geneva High School. We're gonna start tonight with our math team. GHS math team competed in the ACTM Math State Finals at Illinois State University on Saturday, April 26th.
Hey, Mr. Rogers, could you get closer to the microphone, please? Thank you. Yeah, it's on. Maybe just hold it like the rock star that you are.
There we go. Is that better? All right, let me try that again. I apologize. We're gonna recognize the GHS math team first tonight. They competed in the ACTM Math State Finals at Illinois State University on Saturday, April 26th. The team finished in eighth place, and there are 20 students on the team. And I'm gonna introduce all of the team members this evening, and then when they get up here, there are some smaller subgroups or sub-teams that competed and earned honors at the state competition. So I'll recognize those groups after we get everyone on the team recognized. So, starting with Ashley Billings, would you please go up and shake hands with Mr. Choi and work your way down? Ashley couldn't be here tonight, so we'll move on to Ellie Brazelton. Eli, I'm sorry, Eli. I apologize. Kaitlin Cilio. Isla Cunningham. Landon Finale. Zach Fugt. Khan Gokalp. Nick Grimes. Tyler Haney. Soham Kakadia. Eli Kuravilla. Kirill Lunin. Dylan McCord. Kayden Newcom. Riker Nguyen. Jonathan Papasavastos. Claire Reeve. Emmy Rios. Nora Storosli. Alvin Tang. And Samancho Tripathy. Okay, now, we had a geometry team take eighth place in the state. The members of that geometry team were Tyler Haney, raise your hand when you're called, Emmy Rios, Nora Storosli, Claire Reeve, Isla Cunningham, and Riker Nguyen. Congratulations on that great finish. There was also a freshman sophomore eight-person team that finished seventh in the state. Tyler Haney, Isla Cunningham, Claire Reeve, Emmy Rios, Soham Kakadia, Eli Kuravilla, Nora Storosli, and Alvin Tang. There was a freshman sophomore two-person team that took ninth in the state, Tyler Haney and Alvin Tang. At this time, I'd also like to recognize one of our GHS, no, I think there's two here tonight. There they are, look at that. Good thing. Mr. Ryan Esterbrook, if you'd make your way to the front, please. And Mrs. Mary Glinky. Thanks for doing that. Congratulations to this very intelligent group of math students. Job well done. Now we're gonna test you on how to take a picture. There's no way we're gonna be able to get this picture with everybody spread out. So, yeah, we need to squeeze together. We need a few people in the front row. Two lines. While they're taking this picture, do we have members of our FCCLA group here tonight? Excellent. If there are any parents who would like to take a picture, feel free. Smile for the paparazzi, please. All right, congratulations again to our math team. All right, if you could all head to your seats for just a moment. We've got one more introduction, and then we will turn you loose if you would like to dismiss yourselves. Next up, the FCCLA state competition was held on April 9th and 10th. Seven GHS students competed in the FCCLA, which stands for the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, state competition on April 9th and 10th. Some of the events, the baking and pastry and culinary arts competed at College of DuPage, and the proficiency events, cookie decorating and fashion apparel display competed in Springfield. I'm gonna introduce the seven folks who qualified for state, starting with Kaitlin Cilio. Amelia Furman. Molly Gaston qualified but was unable to compete due to illness. Lily Hamilton. Kayla Hobart. Luisa Parente. Nicole Schofield. And Kira Williams. Unfortunately, the rest of Amelia's teammates were not able to be with us tonight. So Amelia and her other FCCLA colleagues all earned silver or gold status at a sectional competition, which then qualified them for state. And I'll just brag about Amelia for just one second. She earned a silver award in baking and pastry at the state competition. Congratulations, Amelia. And that concludes the first portion of our GHS recognition tonight. And now to make room for the next wave, if the math and FCCLA folks could please vacate the room. I'm sure you're all very, very discouraged by that, very disappointed. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. All right, again, thank you very much to the board and Dr. Barrett for the opportunity to recognize another group of students that accomplished great things recently at GHS. Next, we're gonna introduce our virtual enterprises students, along with students who made a trip to Orlando, Florida for DECA, a DECA competition. So we'll start with VE. They were in New York City to compete in two categories, and this group had to submit a written plan at a regional competition, and then had to present their plan again at that regional competition. And as a result, the group in the human resources category earned first place in their region, which qualified them for the competition in New York City. The human resources team consisted of Abby Arnold. Abby, if you'd go up and start to the left-hand side with Mr. Choi there and work your way down, and then stop in front of the screen. The next member of that team was Matty Bruno. Olivia Bogach. And Evan Swarczewski. There was also a four-person team in the virtual enterprises competition in the finance category. Team members in the finance team members were Ryan Kelly. Lucas Oldham. Kayden Sorenson, who's unable to be here tonight. And Owen Homwood. Like the human resources team, the finance group also had to submit a written plan, had to present, and they earned second place in their region, also qualifying them for that trip to New York City. Let's take the picture of our VE group first, and then several of these same students are, a few of them are gonna be recognized in the next category. While these pictures are being taken, I want to thank Mrs. Jamie Dunlap, one of our business teachers. She is the VE teacher, does a phenomenal job, and the experiences that these students get, just running the VE, running the business, the virtual business that they do in VE is a phenomenal real-world experience. But then to get to travel to New York City, enter these competitions, and give presentations in front of live judges in New York City is an amazing accomplishment. So congratulations to all of you. Well done. Now you can sit back down. Next, we had a group in our DECA extracurricular... Next, we had a group in our DECA, Extracurricular Business Organization, that headed to Orlando, Florida. They, not to be confused with the virtual enterprises course, but there was a virtual, virtual business accounting competition. Jack Donowski, excuse me, Jack Donowski and Aiden Cook took first place in the Midwest region. I don't think either one of them are here, okay? And then, they went on to compete in Orlando and took fourth in the country in that competition. So congratulations to them. Also, in the virtual business, excuse, virtual business accounting category was Abby Arnold. Go on, back up.
Mr. Rogers, I just need to say, we had so many kids to recognize, we ran out of certificates. So, the certificates for this group, they're
That's fine.
Coming at ya.
Understandable. Abby Arnold and her teammate Ellie Grancheroff earned fourth place in the Midwest region, which qualified them to compete in Orlando, Florida. Congratulations to you and your teammate as well. Next, in the buying and merchandising category, Luisa Parente and Addie Kling qualified as, they were state finalists at the DECA competition in Rosemont, which also qualified them for Orlando. And in retail merchandising, Ellie Miller qualified for the trip to Florida. And finally, in apparel and accessories, Evan Swarczewski was a state finalist at the DECA competition in Rosemont, and made the trip to Florida as well. Alright, Evan, stay up here, one more picture, one more picture. Gotta have the Orlando picture. I will add, Jamie Dunlap is the sponsor of DECA as well. So she is well-traveled by the end of the school year when her students do so well in these competitions. So thank you to Jamie. Again, congratulations to these VE and DECA students on a job well done. Enjoy the last month of your school year, and thanks for being here tonight, everybody. And that completes our recognition for the high school tonight. DECA and VE folks, you are free to go.
Thanks, everybody, for your patience tonight, so many important topics to go through tonight. So we're working on a little transition here to another group who's gonna come in, and, got some, thank you. We're gonna have a overview of our accelerated enrichment program, so I think those educators and students are about to make their way in. Thanks for being patient, guys, we're excited to hear from you. Always with the props, Mr. Moylan. Can I, I know, I know.
Okay, again, thank you for your patience, and we are now looking at item two, Accelerated Enrichment Program Overview, George Petmeses, AE staff, and students. Would you wanna add anything to that, or just let?
Yeah, we'll let, we'll let Mr. Petmeses, or Dr. Petmeses take it away. I know they've been doing some work reviewing the program, and kinda wanna just share with the board and the community some of the great things that have been happening, and some of the things that they're looking at for the future.
Thank you very much, I'm trying to figure out how to display here, because it's displaying on my computer, but I've got the presenter side on the screen.
Go back to hit Windows K again, and then it, it should pop up in the corner, duplicate.
There we go.
Now, there you go.
No, it's still getting me in presenter mode here.
So now, go up to where it says "display settings." Just do the dropdown, top corner. Top left. There you go. What do you need it to do? On just bottom-left corner.
Okay, there we go. My apologies, and I said this earlier today, patience is a virtue, so I appreciate your patience here today. I wanna thank Dr. Moylan and Mrs. Peacock here, our AE teachers, from Heartland Elementary School, and from Fabian Elementary School, that will be, you know, presenting here today. If at any time during the presentation you get a little tired of listening to me, we have embedded some quotes from students, current and past, so feel free to read those as we're kinda going through this presentation. I will say, before I introduce Dr. Moylan and Mrs. Peacock here, they will introduce some students here from our schools. But we have done a lot of work this year that I'll try to highlight real quick. But one of the things that we've been working on, that I hope that the board, you could, you know, pay a little attention to, is we've been working on our cultural competencies, strategic goal, and cultural competencies is a lot like, I try to use the analogy, it's like when you decide to buy a car, and you decide exactly the car that you want, and then, that day after you go, and you see that car everywhere. As we've embarked on this journey on learning all about, you know, cultural competencies, it seems that everywhere we turn, we are doing some amazing things. And I know that Dr. Moylan will highlight some of those things here. So without further ado, I will pass this along here to Dr. Moylan and Elizabeth Peacock. I do have one thing here, I did wanna provide a little overview of our AE program. Our AE program, the process of selecting students for AE begins in third grade. And we do use a combination of MAP and COGAT assessments, along with teacher recommendations. Lots of conversations take place in third team, right, third grade, right around this time of year, for placement into our AE program in fourth and fifth grade. So we do have fourth and fifth grade math, which is 60 minutes daily, and we have fourth and fifth grade reading at the elementary level, which is 75 minutes daily, before they go on to the middle school, sixth through eighth grade, where they have a period of accelerated math, and two periods of accelerated language arts. So that is the, the quick process, we're engaged in this process currently, right now. And I, we will, I'll pass this off to Dr. Moylan, and let him talk a little bit about the elementary, you know, program at, for AE. Dr. Moylan?
It was a little dusty. My name is Dr. Moylan, I teach A&E reading and math at Heartland Elementary School. I would like to take a moment here and introduce three of my students, who are doing wonderful things in fifth grade reading this year. And in particular, a project that they created, pitched it to our principal, who approved it, and then they ran with this project. So, outside of a lot of the things that we're doing, like book commercials, and starting a blog amongst the fifth grade AE students, and the reading responses, and all the gim kits and book kits and breakouts that we do, this project in particular was quite exciting for all of us. So, if I could have Henry, Lauren, and Josie come on up over here. Thank you. It's my classroom. Thank you very much, I greatly appreciate that. That comes next. Okay, so we will start with Lauren.
A few months ago, we read a book called Refugee that inspired us to create a fundraiser to help children in need all around the world. In the author's note, Alan Graz wrote about organizations that support refugees and others in crises. We created a fundraiser for UNICEF. Our goal was to raise $1,000, and we actually raised $1,338. This was accomplished by placing donation boxes around the school, creating an online link for easy donating, and facilitating a change-for-change week, where students donated certain coins on different days of the week.
To encourage participation, we offered prizes to the highest donating classroom, kindergarten through second grade, and third through fifth grade. Aurelios was so impressed with Heartland's willingness to help children in need, that they generously donated pizza as a classroom prize.
Another project we worked on in math this year is our scaling projects. We brought them here today to show you. We built models of the John Hancock Building, the Crane Communications Building, and Chichen Itza.
To introduce the concept of scaling, Dr. Moylan had us measure and build, scaled down models of classroom objects, which can be seen in our class model. Then, we chose buildings around the world to scale down and created models out of balsa wood. After that, we spray painted them to look even more realistic.
Thank you for letting us share our AE projects. Now, we have a lot of homework from Dr. Moylan, and it's bedtime, so we gotta skip.
Dr. Moylan, are these perfectly to scale? Awesome.
You can check.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Peacock, I am the AE teacher at Fabian. And you've heard from Dr. Moylan and his students about some of the cool things that are currently happening in the AE classrooms, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the long-term impact that elementary AE has on the success of our students in middle school and in high school. Like how the skills and the confidence that they build in our elementary program help them when they get to high school and middle school later. So to get a better understanding of that, I did reach out to former AE students, both middle school and high school, and that's what some of these quotes are that you're seeing on all of our slides, are from them. And I really wanted to find out, like, you know, did, with being in the program in elementary, was it beneficial to you in the subsequent years of your schooling? And the answer was a resounding yes, and I asked them, well, how so? And this will tell, I'm not gonna read them all to you, but this will tell you some of the different ways that it was beneficial to them. But instead of me reading and me telling you all about it, I brought some former AE students, former elementary AE students, to talk to you about how being in elementary AE helps them now that they're in middle school. So I'd like to introduce Jaxx and Sawyer McGann, and Jaxx is gonna, they're in seventh grade at Geneva Middle School North, still in A&E program. And Jaxx is gonna talk about reading, and then Sawyer's gonna talk about math.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jackson McGann, and I was an AE student in elementary school. I was an AE student throughout fourth and fifth grade for Mrs. Peacock's class at Fabian. I was in it for math and reading, and I'm an AE student for middle school too. Today, I will be talking about how advanced reading classes in elementary school helped me prepare better for middle school. The first thing I will talk about is the fact that I was able to learn about the topics I was interested in. When I was in elementary school, I was hooked on World War II. So, when I got into AE for reading in fourth grade, the first thing I asked was if Ms. Peacock had any good book suggestions related to World War II or the Holocaust. She instantly gave me a ton of book suggestions. Me being able to talk to someone who knew more about the topic than me was very helpful and humbling in finding out that I didn't know everything. That leads me to my next point. My next point is that we use strategies like signposts to help understand books at a different and deeper level. The first book we read as a group was called Inside Autumn Back Again by Ta-Nehisi Coe. It's a coming-of-age story told in verse following 10-year-old Ha as she and her family flee Vietnam after the fall of Saigon and immigrate to Alabama. The novel explores themes of war, loss, family, culture shock, and the challenges of being an immigrant. The signpost strategies helped me look deeper into books instead of just reading a story about what happens. I could find themes, internal conflicts, or notice when something is symbolized by something else. I learned to uncover different layers of meaning in a book, and it's something I still use today with every book I read. In AE reading, we also learned about annotating. Ms. Peacock had us annotate all the signposts we saw, along with inferences and other things we noticed, and write them down. So, I learned to stop and think about what I was reading, instead of just passively reading. Every day, we would sit in a group and talk about the things we noted in the book, and talk about what they meant. This helped me learn about how to uncover deeper meanings in books, which helps me now that I'm in middle school, and we annotate almost every book we read. And that leads me to my last and final point. We also learned how we can connect to books, and how sometimes a book can mirror into our lives. We can connect and envision ourselves in the book, and understand different perspectives. We were able to find ways to connect to characters who at first seemed to have nothing in common with us. For example, in Inside Autumn Back Again, we connected to Ha by talking about hardships we had, and how we worked through them, and became better from them. That's all for me, so here's my brother on advanced math.
Hi, my name is Sawyer McGann, and I'm here representing the Fabian Accelerated Program. I would like to talk about how the accelerated math class has affected me in my current life. To start off, we learned about how math connects to real life by playing a year-long stock market game in the classroom. This has really helped me today, not only because I now have invested my money in the stock market, but it's helped me learn how to use math in real life. We didn't just learn about percentages and decimals from a worksheet, we had real-life experiences with using them. We also branched off into in-depth conversations about how current events are affecting the stock market, giving me and my classmates insight on events that I might not have known or cared about otherwise. Additionally, we learned about the patterns of math, and how numbers work and fit together. This has helped me see that math isn't just formulas and equations. Understanding the big picture and the patterns helps me solve more advanced problems. I also wanted to mention how fun this class was. Going to school, I would always look forward to math and reading because of the atmosphere in the classroom. I was always interested in what we were learning about, and that's because Ms. Peacock made it fun and interactive. The last benefit I'm going to talk about is that this class has given me a very solid understanding of math that I have now been able to grow and improve on. AE math didn't just teach me to get the right answer, it taught me how to think through things. Because of this class, I've gotten straight A's in math, and hope to continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I should bring my portfolio to your math class, and you could help me invest. Maybe I should bring my portfolio to your math class, and you could help me invest. Thank you to Dr. Moylan and Mrs. Peacock, and to our students and families that are here today. I know it's a late night and a very packed board meeting. I'm really proud of the work that our AE teachers are doing, and more proud of our students that are finding benefit and moving through our elementary and middle school and high school and, and doing well. There's a lot of work that goes into our AE program. We have six elementary schools and two middle schools and a high school. And I will tell you that our AE teachers are constantly meeting, not only with teachers in their building, to help differentiate and support classroom teachers with students that they have in their classroom, but they are meeting often with each other, at least monthly, but I know more often than that, exchanging ideas, collaborating, and, you know, trying new things. And every so often, our elementary teachers and our middle school teachers will get together to take a look at our program, you know, on a much larger scale. You know, what needs, what are some updates that we need to make? If any, are things working? Are we identifying the right kids? These are constant conversations that we are having with each other and with our, our teachers. If you recall back in 2022, we had AE in third grade, but we made the decision at that point to move AE from third grade to fourth and fifth grade for a variety of reasons, a couple of which are to allow for better alignment with our master schedule, to give our AE teachers and our AE students more time with the, with our, in the AE classroom, and of course, to reduce the number of students that we problem solve. So what we found back in 2022, we're having problem-solving meetings of stu, in, in fourth grade of students that we potentially could have missed and maybe would have benefited. So we were lots of meetings. In 2017, which is not 10 years ago, but about eight years ago, we worked on detangling the math matrix. And I'll, I'll explain a little bit what that means, because that is some of the work that we engaged in this year with our elementary and our middle school teachers. So when we looked at our reading matrix, we had three goals this year as a team, and that is to detangle and simplify the qualification matrix, again, reduce the number of problem-solving meetings that we had. So again, identifying the appropriate students for AE, and reducing the number of newly-qualified AE students entering middle school with previous AE experience. Let me tell you a little bit about that. This is something that we're never going to get, get away from. There are always students that perhaps did not qualify in third, fourth, and fifth grade, and then all of a sudden, come their fifth grade MAP and COGAT score, they're in AE. And so we have to constantly ask ourselves, you know, is our current matrix working? Are we identifying the right kids? Because we want to make sure that the students that we are putting into AE are the correct and they are prepared for AE. And so part of that work came with adjusting the matrix a little bit. And when I say detangling, I'm actually gonna come around here, because my eyes are not that great. We have our current matrix on the left-hand side, and we have our new matrix here on the right-hand side. In our current matrix, we have seven points to qualify for AE. And you see, there's a number of ways to get three points. And it's a combination of a student's COGAT and a MAP. So the lower the COGAT, the higher the MAP. The higher the MAP, perhaps the lower the COGAT. So there's all these different ways to get three. There's a teacher evaluation process that could offer up to three points, a parent recommendation point, and this was always a little bit challenging for us. We made a similar move in years ago with math, as I mentioned earlier, and we detangled it, meaning we offered points for COGAT, we offered points for MAP, and we offered points for teacher evaluation, five points needed for AE. These conversations are, we work through a lot of different scenarios, because as you can imagine, one slight adjustment and it can throw AE numbers in a completely different direction with our, our schools. But also, when we finalized this, we looked at the new matrix and we did, we, we applied the new matrix not only this year, but we've applied it up to four years before to see, all right, which students would have this caught? And, you know, amazingly, and what we had hoped would happen, those students that were problem-solved in, meaning perhaps they had a 119 and, you know, or maybe an 88, they were really, really close, with the new matrix, those kids would have all got caught. Those students were already problem-solved in. And when I say problem solved, a teacher can problem solve and recommend a student, you know, and oftentimes, that's what happens if there's a student that perhaps didn't meet the minimal qualifications. We, we truly believe that not one single assessment should determine this. We would take more of a qualitative approach and have conversations with teams and teachers. And we find, when we looked at who those students were that didn't qualify on the matrix, that were doing well in AE at the elementary level and at the middle school level and at the high school level. We looked at who those students were, what their composite of score, what their story looked like from a, you know, a data and assessment perspective, and, and this is what we, what we came across here. So lots of work, and I want to thank, of course, our AE teachers at the middle school and at the elementary school. But I also want to thank our awesome tech team. I know Mr. Wilks is not here, but there are many days where I send him random numbers and he spits out spreadsheets for me to look at, and we, you know, it's, it makes our job much easier with our tech department helping us with different scenarios. So we went and adjusted the middle school matrix as well, and we landed on this, and this will be in place beginning next school year. So a little, probably a little bit more than what you all had hoped to hear about today, but I want to thank you all for your time, and again, our students and Dr. Moylan and Mrs. Peacock for their work today. Questions?
Can I just ask a question about the matrix? So in looking at that, we've taken out that parent recommendation piece, which I know sometimes our parents know our students the best and what learning environments work really well for them. And then it feels like that also puts a little more emphasis on just standardized test scoring, where that might not be where every one of our students performs the best, that might not be how all of our learners show their, their potential. So are we thinking we're capturing some of those students who might otherwise not be showing up?
Yeah, that was a question we had with the ma, math matrix as well, when we eliminated, eliminated that point for the parent. But the short answer to your question is, that's why we still have a problem-solving process. So teachers can have, do have an opportunity to bring a student that perhaps, you know, did not meet. When we looked at the students that, when we looked at historical numbers and, you know, current numbers and future numbers, students that are in high school that have been in this program, we looked at the role the parent point played. And it actually has a, a role more in the, on the opposite end, I would say. I don't think we've ever had a conversation where we've called the parent and, and asked for the parent point, and the parent said no. So you'll notice on the, the COGAT, we did re, you know, we did lower it from a minimum 120 to 116 to allow for more of those students to be caught. But at the same time, the parent point on the opposite end is, there are oftentimes conversations that we have with parents that they will not place their student in, in AE. So they would not give that point. In the end, it's the conversation that's most important with the parent that, that we have. And if a, if a, if we find that a student has qualified and we have a conversation and there are just some trepidation there, the, the teacher or the AE teacher will have a conversation with that parent, and they will make that decision collectively. So I'm not sure if I totally answered your question there.
So what about the opposite, where there's times where parents feel like, this is where my kid belongs, and they, it might not be showing up in their MAP scores or their COGAT score?
Right. So that's where we have our problem-solving process in place. So again, we don't feel that any single assessment paints the, a picture of a student. And so there are oftentimes where a teacher, or even a parent at that point, will come and say, you know, my child did not, you know, was not in the best position to take the assessment that day, or their classroom data shows a different story. We will pull together all that data, have a conversation with the classroom teacher, the team, and make a determination about AE placement.
Just one other question, then, semi-related. Now at the high school, where we've shifted because of some state law changes, where you're automatically placed into classes based on score, and, and also, we, we have had a policy of just going based off of, anyone can choose what class is they're in? Have we, have we thought about how this may play into like where kids may place later into high school, or like looking at that long-term projection?
Yes, we actually looked, historically, we looked at students that have been in AE up to, I think, in their fourth or fifth year in high school, and identified those students that were in AE, and then we looked at the scores and to see which students, you know, performed and what, what classes they took. Were they in honors classes? Were they in advanced courses? And how they performed in those? And the, the data supported that the, 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 the matrix that we are using and the matrix that we are, we will be putting in place here, those students are the, the right students. It was actually refreshing to hear that. Dr. Moylan asked that same question in our committee, because we want to know. That's, I think that's the biggest fear that, I wouldn't say fear, but that's something that teachers always ask. Are we preparing our students for the courses that they will, that will take? And that's why those problem-solving meetings for students that don't quite make it, and we're discussing, that's why that's very, those are very important discussions, because we want to ensure that the students that we are placing in AE, we're setting them up for success.
Stephanie, I would just add that you're, what you're referring to is Accelerated Placement Act, and that is dependent just on a test score. So that is just dependent on their LNI Assessment of Readiness, math or language arts score, or their ACT.
Right, and then in addition, we allow anyone to choose where they might want to go, but...
Correct, we have open enrollment and course selection.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I think it's a very valuable program, and the teachers do a wonderful job with the students, so I appreciate all your work.
Thank you for your questions, and the work is all on our teachers and our students, so I appreciate them. And your patience with me earlier, can never plan for tech issues, but I appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, English Language Learners with Shanae Sims.
One more transition here. You can tell it's May because we have 1 million awesome things to do. Don't be sorry at all. Don't be sorry that we're doing so many important and valuable things.
While this, while this transition is happening, I intentionally am sitting here because it will provide me a couple opportunities to speak about Mrs. Newkirk while she's setting up for the presentation tonight. I, I want to be quick, because I know we are beyond bedtimes for some of our guests tonight, but I just want to take a...
I'm sitting right here, you don't have to talk about me, though.
Well, I just want everyone to know. Audrey might share her blanket, I don't know. No, seriously. I just want to recognize all that Mrs. Newkirk has contributed to our district for the last 11 years. She is unfortunately leaving us this year. She is assuming a central office role in District 41, so she will be taking her time and talents to Glen Ellen. But she has certainly been an incredible advocate for our students and our families, and has really been the, the voice and the heart of this program for the last 11 years. So I just want to acknowledge all of her work, thank her for that, and she's still stuck with me for a little bit longer, so.
Thank you for that. Hold on. We're...
Your code's right on the screen.
It's not showing up.
I know, I know.
So Kelly gets tech figured out. I am Mrs. Newkirk, I'm the ELL Coordinator for the district, so I oversee ELL and bilingual programming for preschool through high school. We do have a bilingual program at Harrison Street Elementary School. Ms. Kanarowski is here as one of our representatives with some of her students. But we also see a wide range of students with different home languages, Ukrainian, Turkish, Mandarin, and we have programming in all of our buildings, really strong programming in all of our buildings, and we're here tonight to show some of the things that we are proud of. I do have an assistant here as well. Hold on one second.
Estamos orgullosos, we are proud.
Some of the things that I am the most proud of with our team is that across the district, we have a number of incredible teachers and instructional assistants that provide support for our students. The early learning program has two ELL teachers, Harrison has two bilingual teachers, an ELL teacher, and three bilingual instructional assistants, as well as bilingual office professionals. We have an ELL teacher between Williamsburg and Mill Creek, another one at Western and Heartland, and another one at Geneva Middle School South and Fabian. We have a bilingual ELL teacher at North and a bilingual instructional assistant there as well. At the high school, we have three ELL teachers in addition to a bilingual instructional assistant and a supported math class, which we'll talk a little bit about later. Mrs. Morrison is here, representing the high school ELL team. And we also have a bilingual registrar here at Central Office. And these are all changes that have happened really in the most recent years. So just as the person who partners with Shanae and George on getting all the best supports to our students at all of our buildings, I just want to say a huge thank you to our building admin, our district admin, the board, for recognizing that some of our programming is just a little bit more unique than in other places, and you've really supported us in getting so many great people in place to help our students and our families. Some highlights of the year, our staff is amazing, our students are amazing, our families are amazing. They've been here since 6:15, waiting. These little guys are about to present to you soon. We have new curriculum for the bilingual program over at Harrison that's going to be piloted. Kelly has been a big spearhead of that, here with us tonight. We have a newcomer curriculum for English I at the high school, a new foundational math class for newcomers at Geneva High School. And another thing to celebrate is that our numbers at North and South are much more balanced, which we all really, there's a lot of value for all of our students and for our entire academic community when our diversity and our uniqueness is spread out between both buildings and not just housed at one. And that's just been a big effort that we've been working on as well. I'm going to hand it over to the more fun ones, the kids, and let Ms. Kanarowski kind of take the lead on that.
All right, thank you guys so much for having us here today. Victoria is my little helper. She's going to walk down and have them introduce the students if they want. Some of them are feeling a little bit shy right now. And then we're also just going to tell you where, which country their families are from, just because we're represented from many different countries in the United States. So do you want to start?
My name is Victoria, and I go to Harrison Street in second grade, and I'm from Mexico City.
She just moved here last summer, and she is doing great. So we're very proud of her. So she's going to be my helper.
Venezuela.
USA.
USA.
Mexico.
Colombia.
Very cool.
So up here, we have many countries represented, and in the PowerPoint, we did a quick writing sample of what their favorite things are that we do in my classroom, some of the things that they like, as well as a video to tell you what they are proud of, of what they've done. So we have kindergarten, first, and second grade represented here. I have 19 students across kindergarten, first, and second grade. So these are all of my students that we work with, some are here, and so they each have their own slide of things that they are proud of. Sarah? All right, so Sarah will be first.
I'm in kindergarten.
I'm in kindergarten. We read books. We listen to music. We do Mayjoos.
This is my favorite part. Ms. Kanarowski is fun.
Ms. Kanarowski is fun.
And I like to add.
I like to add.
Estoy orgullosa de que me sé todos los idiomas.
I'm so happy that I know every single language.
Okay, next is Victoria.
I'm in second grade. I like the whole school. I like to teach my friends Spanish.
I'm proud of me because I think I read good.
I'm proud of myself because I think I read good and my handwriting is better.
Nice. Yeah, that is very nice.
I'm in kindergarten. We do math. We do calendar. I like the color. Soy orgullosa por hacer las matemáticas. I've been proud of doing math.
There you go.
Kindergarten.
This is also very good. I have to process this. I did not try and get them to write up.
I like Ms. Kanarowski. I like to do puzzles. I like to do calendar and math.
Soy orgullosa de hacer las matemáticas. Proud of doing math.
All right, tell them what grade you're in. First grade?
First grade.
Okay, you can read when you grow. I like to write. Is it up here?
I like to write in English. And Spanish. I like to do dishes and stuff.
I am proud of how I do math and read in English and Spanish.
All right, so this is Santiago and he is in first grade. And he said he likes the Osmo. I like to do fun things. I like to learn in English because it's fun. And his video is?
I'm proud of how I do math.
Do lots of math. All right, so these are all of my volunteers here. We spend a lot of time working in English and Spanish. They start off in Spanish in kindergarten and then as they start to learn more English, we start introducing more English and that is when they start reading in English. So my first and second graders are reading in both languages right now. My kindergarteners are well on their way as well. So we are very proud of them and all that they are doing, right? Yeah, so thank you guys.
We will let you guys go home. Thank you for coming. It was late. Can we do one quick picture? Can we do a picture, a group picture?
Thank you so much for coming and being patient. Thank you, thank you.
Before- So I do have one more thing to highlight. And this is truly one of my favoritest things other than the littles this year. We have a teacher over at Geneva High School primarily geometry and algebra, if I'm not mistaken. And Mrs. Thill came to Shauna and I last spring and just really felt, she felt some frustration and she also felt compelled to take on a brand-new task. And she came to us because we, in the recent years, we've had a larger number of students coming to us in either seventh grade or eighth grade and then going to the high school with not the same math foundational skills as their gen ed peers. And so we were just kind of frantically throwing them in what we thought was the best place for them. And it really wasn't the best option. It wasn't inappropriate. Some of the different ways that we tried to work through it, it just, it really didn't work. And not without any of us trying, right? Mr. Rogers and I and Mr. Drexler, we have lots of conversations of how do we support this group? And so Mrs. Thill came to us and said, I'm going to teach a foundational math class. And I was like, oh, okay. I'm not a math content specialist, but she is. And we worked together to create the parameters for this new foundational math class. So what Jen is doing is essentially like fifth grade through eighth grade math at a super quick pace, but also gleaning all of the most essential learnings because we can't repeat four to five years in a semester or two. And so Jen worked and also to credit John Thomas, Math Department Chair, Shauna, George, Tom, Doug, we all just, we're like, let's do this. And so Jen's class has six students in it. And there's also an instructional assistant who is bilingual, who is Spanish-speaking, who's in that classroom as well. And it isn't a criticism of Jen Thill, but she does not know Spanish. And she does try and she learns along with the kids. But what she has done with these students in just a short amount of time has been so amazing to watch. These students feel very safe in her learning environment to take risks, to practice their Spanish while, and their English, while also practicing and learning math. Of the six, there are four that are going to go right into the regular algebra track next year with their gen ed peers. And Jen has just worked tremendously to create her own curriculum, her own manipulatives. And she's just, it's just been such, such an awesome thing to see. And really probably the most heartfelt thing I've seen all year long. So, and Jen would probably tell you, last summer, she was super scared, very nervous, didn't really know how it was going to go. And if you were to ask Jen Thill today what her highlight of the day is, it would probably be this class. So I do have a quick video. It really is about three minutes. It's a quick just highlight of the classroom. You'll see Mrs. Thill, you'll see Ms. McLean, our instructional assistant. And then we'll interview two students, one in Spanish and then one in English as well. And then that concludes our part of the evening.
Que me siento cómoda a la hora de poder hacer la tarea o poder preguntar lo que sea si tengo alguna duda porque las dos maestras, así como la instructora o la maestra de la clase, me pueden explicar lo que yo necesite y quizás yo no entiendo una parte que está en inglés y yo sé que puedo preguntar sin sentirme nerviosa o incómoda. Entonces puedo preguntar y sé que me van a ayudar si es que no entiendo y sé que está en español y también practicamos un poco de inglés a la vez.
Oh, so Dad, this is not only helping me in math, it helps me too in my English. Like I can learn more words and like I don't feel like shy to like ask for help because like I know there's people that doesn't speak English in that class too. So I don't feel like left out.
This class has been very beneficial for the kids because first they are in a small group and they have the language help they need. So they feel very comfortable talking and asking questions because they know they are going to be helped. And they can ask many times they need until they understand. So they feel free to ask. That's good for them because you can tell, I can tell, they are learning a lot. You can compare the class from last year to this year. You can tell the difference in the knowledge of the kids because they feel comfortable to ask questions, to resolve, to talk, to practice the language even because sometimes they are teenagers, so they feel shy. And in this class, they don't feel that way because they know they are learning and they can practice math and English at the same time. So it's really a good, good, good type of class for them.
All right, thank you again, especially to Ms. Kanarowski. Those little kids, man, you say Ms. Kanarowski wants you to come and they're here, right? Ms. Kanarowski is so fun. So I thank you for all of your work with the little ones. And Mrs. Morrison with all of our help with the big ones. Ms. Kanani over here from South and Fabian also just working tirelessly. She just got two new students from Hong Kong about two months ago. And so she's working super hard with them and making sure that middle school, navigating middle school is going well. So thank you so very much. And we've got lots to be proud of and so much to celebrate and so much more to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm quite sure that everyone on the board is really delighted to see that you're exploring and working with different approaches to be successful with these students. I'm very pleased. Well, next on the agenda is public comments. And I have a pile here. A number of you, I recognize your name because I've read your letters. And so I look forward to hearing this. I don't really want to limit anyone's time, but we don't have an infinite amount. So if you would be relatively brief and if someone else has made the same point, just say I agree with this other person and it will help. When you do this, in order to appear on the video of the meeting, you need to be at the podium and use the microphone. Brian Maloney, your turn.
Good evening, members of Board of Education. My name is Brian Maloney and I'm concerned about the future of the District Foreign Language Program.
There is another one sitting right there if we need to switch them. Give her a tap there, George. No?
All right, are we on now?
Ah, there we go.
So again, my name's Brian Maloney. I'm concerned about the future of our District Foreign Language Program, particularly the intention of the superintendent to sunset the German program. I have two boys currently in the German program and Frau Koszog's level one and two classes. In fact, one of the reasons we decided to move to Geneva was because of the German program. German offers many advantages over other languages. Germany has the third-largest economy in the world and many German companies have American headquarters and branches in the Chicago area. Such well-known companies as Bosch, Siemens, Thyssenkrupp, Aldi, and Haribo are in the local area and actively look to hire German speakers. In fact, over 3,000 German companies are invested in the American market, second only to the UK in employing Americans. According to the Economist Magazine, German proficiency offers salary premiums higher than other languages, between $25,000 and $75,000 over Spanish and French, and they predict the trend to grow even wider in the next 30 years. As a German teacher at St. Charles North High School for the last 25 years, I have witnessed what German can do for students firsthand. I brought along a photo I was just using the other day with a group of parents as we're getting ready for our exchange program. This is my 2011 group. Elizabeth in this picture now works for Austrian Advantage, an Austrian business alliance in Chicago. Rachel earned a Congress Bundestag scholarship after high school, went to university in Germany and still lives there today working for a non-public aid organization, nonprofit public aid organization. Nikki lives in Munich and works for a publishing company. Mitch taught German at the Donkhaus in Chicago and is now a senior global consultant at Aon. Katina got her master's in Austria and now works in Schaumburg for Heidenhahn, a German industrial equipment supplier. John, as a high school student, got an internship with Bosch in Schaumburg, translating documents to send back to Germany. He then got into a prestigious engineering and German translation program at Rose-Hulman and landed a job with Thyssenkrupp building windmills on the North Sea. As many of the world's best engineering firms are in Germany, I get a lot of students who want to be engineers because they know the huge advantage German offers them. A growing segment of my students are now native Spanish speakers who want to learn a third language. And in 25 years, I've never had a year without a native or heritage German speaker in my classes. The German community is here in the tri-cities. As you're aware, the state of Illinois has passed a law requiring high school students to complete two years of foreign language starting in 2028. Eliminating Geneva students to only French or Spanish not only is not what is best for our students, it also reflects poorly on the district, reducing AP honors and elective offerings, which will hurt Geneva's school rankings. Please do not use the excuse of the retirement of one of our German teachers as a reason to discontinue the program and disadvantage our students. Members of the board, I implore you to please reject the superintendent's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. What do you think?
Quinn Schaefer, I think?
Quinn Schaefer, yeah. Is that, yeah, okay.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Quinn Schaefer and I will also be speaking against the decision to sunset the German program. I'm a class of 2024 graduate of Geneva High School and I was a member of the German program for all four years of my high school career and was an active member of German club for two years before serving as club president for the 2023 to 2024 academic year. When I first entered GHS in 2020, I had no idea the role that language would play in my high school years. I assumed that I would take my required two years and then be done with it. However, I quickly learned that this would not be the case. Through the excellent teaching and guidance of Frau Swedenbank, who you will hear from soon, and Frau Koszog, it did not take long for me to gain a deep passion for German and the German program. Every day for the next four years, I would be incredibly excited to walk into that class, aside from a handful of exam days. There was always a new story to learn, activity to perform, or conversation to be had. Frau Swedenbank, who was my teacher for three years, gifted me and my peers with a knowledge that extends far beyond language. The idea of phasing out the program was always a looming threat, one that was brought up occasionally but always seen as a distant possibility rather than a current reality. You can imagine my disappointment then when several days ago, my former teacher Frau Swedenbank texted me informing me that the school board was now seriously considering a plan to phase out the German program. They cite the declining enrollment numbers, which is an unfortunate reality. However, the importance of the German program is not something that can be expressed in mere numbers. It can be expressed in experience. And I know that I am far from alone in saying that this program has been the most significant experience of my high school career. I have met countless friends and made countless memories through this program and have even had the great privilege of traveling to the German-speaking countries several times to put what I have learned into practice. Thanks to the teaching of Frau Swedenbank, I would learn that a language is not just a different way of speaking, but a window into another culture and way of life. To phase out this program would be to close this window. Overall, this program is a tight-knit community of passionate, bright, and creative students, of which I am so proud and lucky to have been a part of. Phasing out this community would destroy a program which has provided and continues to provide countless opportunities to the students who decide to take up- countless opportunities to the students who decide to take up its challenge. With all this in mind, as someone who has had their life changed because of this program, I ask you all to please reconsider its phasing out as it would be a defeat not only for the students who take this language, but for the wider Geneva Community High School as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn. Jessica Zeke?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jessica Zeke. I'm also here to speak on the phasing out of the or the sunsetting of the German program. I am going to shorten mine because my son will also be speaking as to his experience with the program. But I will say this, not all kids are sport kids or theater kids or art kids. Some kids find their passion through those classes that they take or those subjects. This was the case for my son. The program and subject impacted him so much that he is actually following in Frau's footsteps and majoring in education and German in college. I understand we have declining enrollment numbers in the program, but enrollment ebbs and flows as families grow up. This is not a new concept. It is not not for the German program or any program. I believe our district has bigger things to focus on and other areas that need significant attention. The sunsetting of the German program, in contrast, is a small move and purely symbolic that won't ruffle many feathers, but make it appear as though real changes are being made. The only real change that it creates, though, is to limit educational opportunities for our students. Starting in 2028, as the gentleman who first went said, we are going to require two years of educator of foreign language to graduate high school. And Geneva's response is to cut one of the programs. So we will go from having three languages to two, but now we're requiring it to graduate high school. When students have a choice or a strongest interest in a subject, they are more engaged and overall have higher achievement. On a more personal level, I think the wonderful experience, I think about the wonderful experience my child had and other students had over the years. The German club, the actual trips to Germany, field trips to the Kriskindl Market in the city, the list goes on and on. The support Frau has given them, the experiences the program has given them. It makes me sad to think future students won't have that opportunity. I would really like you guys to reconsider sunsetting the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tyler, it looks like it's your turn.
Good evening, members of the board. I'll be also speaking on the sunset program or on the sunsetting of the German program. My name is Tyler Zeke. I am a senior at the high school who is currently enrolled in AP German. As many of as many of you know, I sent an email to you all stating some of my past experiences and I want to take the opportunity again to speak here tonight. The German program has offered me many opportunities over the past five years. It has allowed me to travel to Germany, Austria, and Switzerland and actually have an appreciation for the culture and to use my language skills. Based on what I knew from German class and what I learned from that trip, I made the decision to spend my year my junior year in Germany as an exchange student. Without the GHS German program, I would never have been able to have any of those experiences. Upon my returning home from Germany, I naturally enrolled in AP German, where I further expanded and practiced my language skills, which led me to receiving my seal of belligerency in February. I am now going to be taking my AP test this Wednesday, which will be greatly useful, where I will be majoring in German education. Though my experiences are on the extreme side, um like the first presentation or like the first speaker mentioned, German has a German plays a large role in the global economy and in many businesses, al- also in the US. Students need options. As a current student, I could admit that I don't try or learn as much when I am forced to take a class. When I get to choose, however, I am much more willing to learn and actively participate if it is a course or program that interests me. It always has seemed to me that Geneva is proud of the amount of courses and programs that they are able to offer, to which I believe a large part of the success as a school district can be accredited. Removing German will take that choice away from each and every student signed up to take German one next year. It will also remove that choice from each and every student who will come through the high school in the years to come. It will make foreign language just another hurdle to get to graduation, instead of a fun and interesting class where students will actually be engaged and actively learning. I do want to add, I know a ma- major part of this decision is based on the budget and I had the opportunity to present on the budget to Ms. to Dr. Barrett last Friday. And I would like to touch base on, he did state that our ac- our athletic spending, which is over six hundred thousand dollars, based on the information that I've gleaned from Mr. Latham and Mr. Rogers, is a small fraction of the budget. That makes Geneva, that makes the German program a far, far smaller fraction. And as I believe also our superintendent said in the last meeting, the German program is small but mighty. The students enrolled in it care about the program and is an integral part of their high school experience and I sincerely hope that it will remain a part of GHS for the years to come. I would like to thank you all for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you, Tyler. Jamie Carholda. Did I say that right? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I did.
Close to the mic. We just want to make sure we hear. Thank you so much. Sorry.
Okay, good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I did butcher mine a little as I was speaking to Mr. Maloney because you didn't want us to duplicate. So it's gonna sound choppy. I'm here tonight as a parent whose three children have all gone through the German language program. Each of my boys has taken German and each one has loved it. Through this program, they didn't just learn a language, they traveled to Europe, visited four different countries, and experienced cultures in a way that textbooks simply cannot offer. It opened their eyes and shaped how they see the world. But beyond personal growth, there's a practical side. German is the most widely spoken native language in Europe and is a key language in science, engineering, business, and philosophy. Knowing German gives students a competitive edge in international careers, especially in STEM fields, international relations, and a global business. Germany offers generous scholarships and tuition-free educations at its universities, which can become accessible to our students through this program. By offering German alongside Spanish and French, we aren't just teaching vocabulary. We're investing in well-rounded, globally-prepared young adults. Removing this program would take away opportunities, not just for travel, but for future college, career, and cultural growth. Please don't let that happen. This program matters more than most people realize. Let's keep it alive for the next generations of students. And as I was just informed by my fourth grader sitting next to me, there's several fourth graders at Harrison Street School that want to take German.
Thank you very much. Frau Swedenbank.
Guten Abend. Um I just want to congratulate all you board members on your election and thank you for your service to our community. I am Rene Swedenbank, one of the two German teachers. My other colleague Karen is in the audience. Um I am speaking here on behalf of the entire World Languages Department and I would like them all, my colleagues, to stand up and be recognized, please. And Beth. So I'm here to speak on behalf of all of them in our strong opposition to the plan to sunset the German program. We sent a written statement to the board on Friday, May 2nd. I hope you all had a chance to read it. Um I understand that you've also received quite a few letters in support of the German program from former students and from community members. And while there are many reasons why we oppose this action, I'm not going to reread our statement, but I'd like to use my time allotted to focus on a few points and even to propose an alternative to this plan. First, though, I'd like to thank Dr. Barrett. You have continued and allowed us to continue this transparent dialogue. I appreciate you acknowledging that eliminating this course of study is a big deal. I couldn't agree with you more. We have invested twenty-seven years into this multi-year program that has a capstone and that has provided students, as you've heard from some of them, with so many educational opportunities outside the building. So I think it deserves very careful consideration and some really thoughtful attempts to preserve it before we take that action. Some steps that we haven't done yet. I don't want us to jump to the ending first. So as you may have read in our statement, enrollment from year to year has an ebb and flow. And we may experience some years a significant drop, as we've done for the upcoming school year. And this happens once every four or five years, but the numbers usually recover, I shouldn't say usually, always recover in the following years. During this year's registration, only nineteen students between the middle school and high school elected to take German one next year. This is the lowest number that we've ever experienced, but we maintain this is a dip and it is not a trend. The concern, I think, that Dr. Barrett has is that if you have a small German one class, you'll have a tiny German five class years down the road. But as you've heard from some of our previous speakers, students are engaged in German language for lots of reasons and not the least of which is their cultural connection, family connection, people in the family who speak German. In fact, this year thirty thirty percent of our students have a family member who speaks German. So when you have that close cultural connection, you're more likely to stay. And we do have very high we have very high retention rates in German. So in our statement, we also discuss the average class size. So the average class size at Geneva High School, according to our school, the ISBE school report card, is twenty-two. This year, our number is at twenty-one point six. Next year, that number would be twenty-one point four, even with that drop. So we surely can continue to support a program that would allow class sizes in their twenties to continue. If we do have a low enrollment in German five, we can consider, as we've done in the past, making German four and five a class together and teaching it as a blended program. But to eliminate the program that has sufficient enrollment to run a class at each level, just in case there's a small German five class, it just doesn't make sense. And even while we've been aware of the declining enrollment projections, we have still continued to add multiple electives. This, of course, is going to have an impact on enrollment in all the electives. Now, our students are very fortunate to have a wide range of these electives that satisfy both their interests and units towards graduation. But I do want to point out that German fulfills a requirement that many of the colleges and universities that our students attend want to see on their transcripts. And in a few short years, as many have already mentioned, it will be a requirement. And that brings me to my second point. And probably the one that will have the biggest impact on future enrollment in German. And that is that the Illinois School Code right now, that is in effect right now, requires two years of a world language for graduation, starting in 2028. The final year of the phase-out would coincide with this effective date of the law. And that means that when the requirement goes into effect, Geneva students are going to have one less language to choose from to meet that requirement. This, as we've said before, is not what's best for our students. Dr. Barrett, you expressed doubts that this requirement is possible to implement statewide. That there aren't enough teachers to teach every high school student in the state. But here are some facts that I'd like you to consider. The law stipulates, quote, "It does not apply to students with disabilities whose course of study is determined by an IEP." So we've exempted a large group of students who will not have to meet this requirement. I think that certainly makes it more feasible and especially for our district to be able to manage. This law was first passed in 2021, so districts will have had seven years to plan for this. And if we are not teaching the language, we are not going to produce more world language teachers. I'm happy to say now that I will have produced three, so. There have already been two attempts, this is important, there have already been two attempts to remove this from the code and both have failed. The most recently was in January. And we've spoken directly with the governor's office, directly with the governor's office about this. They have confirmed that the law is going to take effect as written. Now, it's certainly possible that there will be another attempt, but it doesn't really make sense to phase out a program that's going to be needed in the near future to fulfill this graduation requirement. This is a law right now and we don't really have the right to decide whether or not that law is going to go into effect. So unless or until it changes, it seems too early to be considering this action. And finally, I just want to talk very briefly about the Illinois State Standards and our own strategic plan, which I happened to pick up on the table outside. So according to our own strategic plan and the Illinois State Standards, cultural competency is a very important aspect of of the curriculum. And through this law, the message from the um the message from the state is that they consider cultural competency be so important that they've passed a law that would support it. A law that is also, I'm sorry, as a district, we've adopted cultural competency as one of our goals, so clearly it's important to us. So why would we take an action that is in direct contradiction of that goal? What better way to meet this standard than through a world language program that continues to provide choice and opportunity to our students? So I do have to say that it it's very difficult for me to speak against an action. And I know that everybody's intentions are good. I didn't ask anybody come up here and brag about me as a teacher. I am I am speaking in support of students in the future. I won't be here forever. But there is a long line, at least six highly qualified educators who would love to fill in any other role. And we do have to hire somebody to fill to 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 fill the position for the the four-tenth position that's open right now. So I am speaking really on behalf of students in the future, knowing how important it is to be able to have a choice. Here's what I would like to propose. Continue the program for the next two years and allow the students who registered for German one to take it as planned. We continue to promote all world languages equally at the middle school levels through the summer world language camp that this year is going to be only in its third year. And we can see how that affects the numbers as the years progress. If a future attempt to overturn the law is successful in the next three years, well then we revisit where we are. Until the enrollment increases due to the requirement, small German five AP classes can be combined with German four and taught as a blended class. In the meantime, as I said, staffing, continue to staff part-time teachers until we see whether or not we can sustain a full-time teacher again. We are a blue-ribbon school in a high-performing district. We earned that designation partly due to our World Language Department. Our students deserve that choice and I think we can take actions that will mitigate expense while still providing this choice to our students. Thank you very much for letting me speak on behalf of the program.
Thank you, Frau. Frau Klicka.
Guten Abend. Uh my name is Oslah Klicka. I'm the CEO of the German-American Chamber of Commerce of the Midwest.
Little closer is all, so we can hear you. Thank you.
So my name is Oslah Klicka. I'm the CEO of the German-American Chamber of Commerce and I'm here as a private person. But in my role, I was at the keynote speaker at UIC for the German Awards Day and I can say what an incredible group of people there was, young students that came through high school like yours, that got awards to go to Germany to study further. And it was just wonderful to see. And when I heard that Geneva is thinking of closing down their German program, I just wanted to come and tell you that we as a chamber, we take care of trade relations between Germany and the US. And as Mr. Maloney already said, and I think I know already one of his students because she was a colleague of mine, Elizabeth, at the German-American Chamber, um yeah, there are six thousand German companies in the US. German companies provide eight hundred seventy-one thousand jobs in the US. They invest six hundred fifty-six billion into the US. And the biggest question we always get, why don't we have more people that can speak German and can work in our companies? Because language is power, not. Weil Sprache Power ist, nicht Kommunikation, sondern Verbindung. Und es ist super wichtig, dass wenn du Deutsch lernst, du auch eine Vision über die Kultur Deutsch hast. Und das ist, um zu sein, super wichtig für Deutsche, weil sie es mögen, dass jemand auf der anderen Seite ein wenig über die Quirkinkeit versteht. Weil ich immer eine Medienvertreter bin, weil ich meine US-Kollegen erklären muss, dass deutsche E-Mails immer sehr kurz sind. Und die Deutschen sind nicht so angsthaft, dass sie kurz sind. Sie mögen nicht darüber reden, wie Baseballgames am Wochenende sind. Also Dinge wie diese sind etwas super wichtig, das sie lernen. Die Lehrer hier lernen ihren Studenten. Und das ist weshalb ich denke, dass alle die Macht, die deutsche Unternehmen haben, und ihre Leitlinien in Sostenbarkeit und Innovation und in Kunst, es wäre wirklich schlecht, sogar für die Wirtschaft, wenn sie keinen Chance hätten, zu arbeiten für eine Firma, die jemanden hat, der vielleicht nicht flüssig sprechen würde, aber Deutsch versteht. Und außerdem, Deutschland bietet für Studenten eine kostenlose Universitätserziehung. Also, sobald du hier, ich denke, es ist C1 oder C2, kannst du in Deutschland für kostenlos studieren. Und das ist etwas, das vielleicht, vielleicht brauchen wir mehr Advertisements. Vielleicht müssen Kinder wissen, wie spannend es sein könnte, Deutsch zu lernen. Und zu wissen über alle die großen Unternehmen und alle großen Produkte, die von Deutschland kommen. Vielleicht eine Tour durch Haribo in Wisconsin, das große Fabrikprojekt, könnte etwas sein, was sie glauben, cool sein könnte. Also, wenn Sie Hilfe benötigen, um einige coole Wege zu interessieren, Menschen in Deutschsprache, wir sind hier für Sie. Vielen Dank.
Well, normally speaking, the board listens quietly to people as they address the board. And that's what we've done just now. But in the interests of clarity and openness, if any board members would like to ask a question, particularly of either Frau, we could entertain that. If there's anything that you'd want to talk about very briefly.
I was just gonna say, I will bring this topic back up in my report here in a minute and an opportunity for the board to ask me questions too, if you want, so.
Okay. And just as a minor aside, my son has received a PhD in Germanic Studies just now, kind of. And he got a job at the University of Denver as an Associate Professor of German Studies. So any, any fathers out there know how you feel when your son gets a big deal job. So thanks for that. All right, unless somebody has a question, we will move on to the next item. But thank you all for your comments. It's been very interesting. And I'm glad you were able to speak and speak clearly. Legislative Updates is next.
Yeah, I just have a couple of updates. This morning at ten AM, the House, the Illinois General Assembly House, had a subject matter hearing on House Bill 2451, which is regarding an amendment to the requirement for foreign language for two years at the high school level. They heard from various organizations throughout the state who are subject matter experts on that. And then they also took questions from members of the Education Policy Committee in the House. It does, I didn't get to hear all the way to the end. It was like an hour and a half long at that point. But they are going to be looking at this legislation and proposing some changes to it. They did mention the year 28, 29 of where it will start. So there is some time to make some adjustments to that. And so they are going to be taking a closer look at that language. So I wanted to bring that up tonight, since that was a topic that we were talking about. Again, I wanted to keep it brief, so there's really only one other bill I wanted to bring out, Senate Bill 191. Completely different subject. They are looking at requiring three-point safety belts on school buses that are purchased by districts. If you lease your buses, this is not a requirement. It will not be retroactive to buses that you've purchased in the past. But any new buses that you purchase potentially could require this three-point safety belt on it. So it is moving its way through the process. They are targeting the end of the month still as finishing up this session. So we'll see what other bills come through and make it to the finish line with the third reading. And that's all I have tonight.
Jackie, can I ask you to clarify? The foreign language bill, is that, did you say 2029 they were going to start looking at it?
No, that's, 28, 29 is the school year where it was the current legislation would start. So they said that they have a couple of years to continue to look at this.
That's what it's currently slated, would be currently slated to begin.
Yeah, so they had a discussion, and they said, we have some time, but they do want to move forward with looking at making adjustments to it.
Thanks.
Quick question to Todd maybe. Todd, with the buses, do any of our current bus inventory have three-point safety belts in them?
For regular transportation, they do not.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, my understanding, I read something about the legislation today. And the most recent, the original proposal was that this would require all buses, all buses driven by school districts to have, you know, the, the safety belts. And now the modification is that any bus manufactured in Illinois and sold would need to have the safety harnesses in them. So there's a, there's a change in there that I think would put less pressure on school districts. If it did happen, the law doesn't necessarily say all of your buses have to have them. It just says that manufacturers would need to include those if they construct, made those in Illinois.
Yes, stuff moves so quickly and with the General Assembly at the end, you like.
Yeah, I just heard that this morning.
Yeah, this morning, yeah.
That might be the smoothest segue from legislative report to superintendent's report we've had. So Andy, would you return?
Yeah, thanks so much. Just a couple of quick things and then get into the topic of the day, for sure, right? First, I just, you know, as I always want to do, want to acknowledge some of the things that have been going on and want to just acknowledge that last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and that's an opportunity to recognize our awesome teachers and, you know, all of the educators in our district for the great things that they do. I know a lot of fun stuff happened. And it's actually a good week to have it, because this time of year, it's, you know, it's stressful. There's a lot going on, and I think it's a good reminder of all the great things that happen. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, because we're always doing our best to acknowledge and appreciate folks in these meetings. Next, just, I apologize, Robin, for that. Just as a friendly reminder, our meetings are always on Mondays, but we sometimes have these goofy windows. And we'll have one next time where our next meeting actually will not be on a Monday, because that's Memorial Day, so it'll follow on that, or fall on that Tuesday. So just a reminder for, for the board and community on that. And I kept those brief so we could get into our, you know, into this, continue this conversation regarding the German programming. You know, and we started this last time, shared some information with you about our declining enrollment and the idea of sunsetting the program so that we could, you know, wanting to maintain our commitment to our, our current German students. Obviously, the board and the administration has received additional feedback like we did tonight and wanted to have an opportunity tonight, just for some conversation with the board and if the board had questions or comments or things you wanted to talk about that, that I could try to answer. I do want to sincerely thank all of the speakers who came today. And I would echo what Renee said. This is, when we have these kinds of conversations, these are a big deal, and we should be having important, difficult conversations. And I, I appreciate that they can be transparent and open like this. I, I think this is what we have to do in order to be able to make decisions together and move forward as a district. So I, I thank Renee for doing that, Karen also, and Jesse's been part of these conversations with me too. So, you know, obviously, we know that, as we discussed last week and as Tyler pointed out, we know that this is a small and mighty group, and our kids who matriculate through this program, we know have tremendous experiences. And, you know, what we're trying to do is think about this from the perspective of our, our strategic plan and that goal of, you know, trying to right-size our staffing with enrollment, trying to do that potentially in, in the most thoughtful way we can, where we're not having to riff staff or employees like, you know, we've talked about when, when we've been addressing some of these issues, like at the middle school level, we talked about a similar approach. And it's really about, you know, we're, we're trying to think about that long-term commitment that you have when you start a German one program. And like Mr. Meloni said, right, like, he's got kids in the program. We want to be able to maintain that opportunity for those kids. And anytime you start this program, German one, that means you're maintaining this for five more years, right? And so if we want to make sure that we can do that as we're watching our enrollment decline and the participation in that program decline, that really was the, has been the impetus for these conversations. So I don't know if there are other questions or comments from the board that I can answer. I, I will say, I guess, one more thing I would say. Certainly, this feedback that we've heard and the feedback we heard this past, over the past week or so, from mostly our, our former students who had great experiences in this program. We don't take it lightly, take it to heart. Certainly something that, you know, Mr. Rogers and Mrs. Sims and I will reflect on and have conversations about following this meeting as well, so.
Yes, I have a question. I've been hearing, you can hear me okay. So I've been hearing about these spikes in the enrollment going up and down. But the latest demographics of the country in terms of birth rates and trends of this nature, I mean, these affecting universities as well. I mean, now, some universities, obviously, that are, you know, taking on Germanic Studies and this sort of thing. But are we really going to be, as I understand, looking at the demographic studies irrespective of German? Are we really looking at spikes continuing like that? Or is the trend somewhat like you have that icon going down?
Yeah, so in terms of our district's overall enrollment, you're saying?
Is it really going to be spiking up and down, or is it really on a downward trend? I just want to make sure I understood this correctly.
Yeah, our, our district's enrollment is definitely on a downward trajectory. It has been for some time. And, you know, remember, we shared some information earlier this year in multiple meetings from a demographic study. So, you know, there was a time not that long ago that we had about, I think the best way to think about it is kind of by a cohort, right? Or so by class of kids. So there was a time not that long ago when a cohort of kids, like a class of kids in the Geneva system and at Geneva High School, was about five hundred, right, about five hundred kids per cohort. We're now down to about four hundred kids per cohort at the high school level. And we're, the, the long-term trajectory that we're looking at is we're seeing that go down into the mid-three hundreds and potentially the low-three hundreds as we, you know, over, say, the next decade or so. So the, the specific local demographic study that we did would say that we're probably going to go down a little bit, not a little bit more, you know, not a lot more, but we're going to go down some more over the next decade or so and then theoretically stabilize a little bit if there are no other, you know, significant changes like, you know, some big new neighborhood or something like that, like we've talked about. I, I do think, for what it's worth, I think when we heard from Renee, when she was talking about spikes, I think she was talking about in the individual program, right? Like, some years it'll be higher and some years it'll be lower. But I think our overall enrollment will be on that downward trajectory, right? Okay, yeah, thanks.
I had a, oh, go ahead, Phil.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, so I had a couple of questions. So I know this is an elective, and we offer several electives across our catalog for our high schoolers. Where, do we look at a, a cap that we want to have all classes at a certain size? Are we choosing to not run other elective courses? Like, are there other electives in the same boat as the German courses right now?
Yeah, so when we, you know, part of the impetus for this conversation at this time of year, you know, as I think you heard from Renee and some of our speakers and, you know, this is something that we have been keeping a watchful eye on for a few years and been having some conversation about for a few years as we've been watching those numbers and watching the district's overall enrollment decline. So I would say the reason we're having this now is largely because that sectioning that happens in the spring, right? And Mr. Rogers and Mr. Drexler and the team at the high school, you know, kids put in their course requests and, in the winter, and as they get into the spring, start building schedules. And that smaller number of students that we saw for German one this year, I, I think, kind of perpetuated, you know, circling back to this conversation that, that we've been having. So I would say, and Mr. Rogers can, can nod at me or throw something at me if I'm wrong. The truth is, there is no hard and fast number, and we don't try to have a hard and fast number, because we know that it's, it's so nuanced. I, I do think that, you know, to your point, in any given year, there are a number of courses that we don't run at the high school, because the number of kids who express interest in that class doesn't meet a threshold that we think makes it worth running. And I think, that doesn't mean that we don't think that's a great class, right? That doesn't mean we don't think that it's a valuable experience for kids. But in any given year, there are courses. I think between this year and next year, there might be about, I think, around ten courses that are in our course catalog that we're either not running this year or we are not running next year. And as we talked about last week, I think that it's, again, it's that five-year commitment that gives this one extra gravity. And, you know, on, on one hand, and, you know, I'll be candid, Renee and I had this conversation. I mean, we talked about this. We, we come at that five-year thing from, kind of, looking at it from different lenses, right? If you have a business class that we can't run this semester, well, you can just not run it and then theoretically run it next semester or, you know, one time next year or something like that. The way I think, we're trying to look at the, this five-year commitment is, you know, as I said earlier, we want to maintain our commit, make sure we can maintain our commitment to our current German students. And so we feel a heavier kind of weight on making a determination about German one. Where I think, you know, Renee respectfully disagrees and would say, because it's a five-year commitment, you shouldn't pull, pull that plug right now. You should, you know, want to maintain that. So I, I don't know if I answered all of your questions, but.
No, I think that does answer it. And specifically, like, I was really wondering about why now, but I think that you speaking to the five-year commitment is, is most of why that's important to start this. And, and I guess my other part of the question is, like, have we tried to do anything to recruit students into German? I think everyone knows we offer Spanish. Most know we offer French, but do we try that for German? So more students know that that's an option, since not every district does offer it?
Yeah, I mean, I know Renee's done, we've done camps and the summer camp. Actually, I think the first time I met you was at the middle school. There was a middle school German club you got rolling to. Renee's talking about a. Okay. I'm going to repeat that for the microphone, so I'm not speaking over you. So Renee shared that what I was remembering was a German leadership thing where her high school German students presented to the middle school German students. And this, to answer your question about the advertisement or the ramping up that middle school German camp that I mentioned started two years ago. This would be the third year, this summer would be the third year.
I just want to say something in terms of regards, like the summer camp. I know it's new, but as someone who is an upcoming middle schooler, I've never heard of it. So marketing definitely needs to be able to. So marketing definitely needs to be a push. I also just want to say, we're talking about removing electives and what it's going to do versus keeping the electives. And I know I'm butchering this completely. But there have also been, in regards to, if we were to remove the German program and not operate to the students. It's so much easier when you can type it and then reorganize your words.
Yeah.
If the German program goes away, there's no guarantee that upcoming students aren't going to want German and you won't have that surplus. For example, I know that there were various computer graphics courses that we used to offer. And I have, and I have several kids that have gone through the Geneva High School that my, the younger children were looking extremely forward to, but we removed that program. So you are removing electives. You are removing options. That's all.
Go ahead, Willard.
Yeah, I just had a question. Maybe I didn't understand completely. I understood that one of the options, I don't remember the speaker's name, but it was a notion of part-time teachers and blended classes. So I guess that's a little bit abstract to me in terms of how that would work. And would you really reduce the quality of your teaching or the presentation for the students? I mean, I know that they're avid learners and they're very, I'm sure a student know how to do things, how to improvise. But is that really the best model to use part-time teachers and blended classes? Four and five together? I mean, I just wonder.
Yeah, I think anyone would say, well, I, I guess you're asking two questions. One, the part-time teachers, our program is currently staffed by two part-time teachers.
Okay.
Who are strong and wonderful. So, you know, our program is currently staffed by part-time teachers. As you, if, if the program did, you know, sunset or phase out, yeah, ultimately you would be using less and less FTE in terms of part-time staff, you know, until you got to that last section of AP German or whatever the case may be. So yes, that, that is how that would work, you know, if you did that. To your, the, the other part of your question, is that, you know, putting multiple classes together, is that ideal? I don't think anyone would say that's ideal. But I, I think it was, you know, a, a point about an alternative approach that, that could be tried.
Can I?
Yeah, that, that has been done in the past, absolutely.
Can I comment? I know, Andy, you know my feeling about this. This is not going to be the last time we, we have this issue. I don't know what the next topic is going to be or subject is going to be. But with declining enrollment, we're going to see this again and again and again. So we need to think, it frustrates me that we try to think within the box that we've been working in for the last 30 years and not thinking outside that box to come up with a different solution. Now, I don't know if it's, if, if we have to renegotiate something with our GEA or if we have to find some other way, but I will use the example of my son. We came back from Shanghai. He had two years of Chinese. He needed a third year for his, for his, for his college requirement. He was able to pick that up through an online, and again, I've, I've talked about co-ops with other, other school districts in the area who are struggling with the same problem. If we keep thinking only in the same box that we've always thought in, in, in the same square, we will not, will not solve this problem. And we're just going to, we're, we're going to become less, we're going to offer less and less to our students. So, you know, I, I don't know what it takes to, to do this. It needs probably more than, than what we've put into it today. But I, that would be my hope and desire that we would consider alternatives outside of it has to be a teacher in our district teaching, you know, these kids that we can't find another opportunity here. That's, if we're doing this for the kids, that's a soli, that's, that is the, the one way to, to solve the problem. So I'll step off my soapbox at this point.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think the only thing that I would add, I think, feels like that our German program needs a marketing director in the middle school in order to, to promote, promote the language. And I think seems like there's great opportunity in, in, in the language and, and in future, you know, those that, that know the language seems like there's a bright future. So in order to capture that and to promote the language, I'd be curious to, and I'm guessing, Mr. Rogers, that you, you speak to the eighth grade to see what, how, how, how it, or Dr. Barrett maybe you do, or who, someone does that speaks to the middle school. Okay, we, you know, we have this many Spanish, this many French, this many German. And, you know, so we kind of have that, that understanding of, of, of the numbers that are coming, coming through. And then, so I, I think as a board, we don't want to, we don't want to outright take away sections that are, that are important to our, and our, you could say, legacy programs or classes. But we also, you know, have, to have an understanding that, that we need to, we need to be thoughtful and we need to be, you know, data-driven in our decisions and whatever we do. So like I said, I think it really comes down to the marketing of the, of the German. If we, if we can get the enrollment up in that, I don't think anyone here at the table would, would be opposed to keeping or not sunsetting, right? I think that's not the goal of, of what we're talking about. It's the, it's the hope that we can get more students into this. And if trying to find a German student is the, is what we have to talk about, I think that's a good problem to have. So.
That, that's fair. Thanks. And you know, that middle school marketing thing, certainly it's a conversation we've had before. And, and candidly, it's a conversation that all of our departments at the high school, especially our elective departments feel very strongly about. You know, that is one of the challenges of this topic as well, right? It's a, I, I won't go so far as to say zero sum, but you know, there are only so many courses. Kids only have so many spots in their, in their schedule and there's only so many things that they can take. And so there's always going to, you know, that balance, that balance or that scale is, is always tipping one way or the other and it's a little precarious. But I, that's fair feedback. So thank you. And if there's any, you know, anybody else not just ask questions, but feedback or thoughts for us.
Can I add to Dan's point real fast? I think something that I had asked Dr. Barrett for, which I know he had shared with the whole board, was the number of students enrolled, so the 19 total for next year. But he also did share some numbers of enrollments for other foreign language courses and it was kind of eye-opening for me. So I think to understand what our students are mainly picking and that I think the number you had shared was that 70% of our current students are enrolled in a foreign language?
Well, by the time they graduate from high school, 70% of our, about 70% of our kids will have taken at least two years of a foreign language. So not at any one time.
Not one time, just like at some point.
Yeah.
So maybe it might be helpful to see all those numbers as well compared to each other because I think what Dan is saying, like the recruiting might be it, but also we do, when I looked at the French numbers compared to the German numbers, there wasn't, if you took two or even three kids out of French and put them in German instead, then we're talking about a French problem instead of a German problem. So.
Yeah. To, to Paul's point, these are the things that we're really trying to be very thoughtful about as that enrollment number goes down. And, and as Dan said too, right? I think a robust program is, you know, we'd love to see all of our, our programs be robust programs. We know they all have impact on kids like, you know, several, like Tyler so eloquently shared today and the impact on him. So we know that all of our programs do that and that's what makes these, these decisions and conversations difficult and important that we have them like this.
I wanted to reference some of what Paul was talking about, looking at different ways of this problem and not just thinking about how we've always done it. One of the things I did hear on that hearing this morning was that online world language is really not a good option. So having your students sit in a classroom and listening and trying to learn online is not. But we have talked in the past about a co-op because other districts are also looking at sunsetting this program. And Dr. Barrett, you had talked about some of the logistical challenges with that. Could you talk about that again and just a couple of the reasons why it would be difficult to try that with another district?
Sure. I mean, I think you know that, you know, we currently have a couple of different co-op models in place in the district. We, we have our Mid Valley Special Education Co-op and we, we also have the Fox Valley Career Center that, specific to the high school, probably most analogous to this topic, that provides, you know, opportunities for kids to take courses that we otherwise at this point don't offer at Geneva High School and aren't sure, in some cases, would never be able to. So in each of those instances as examples, right, those are, those are formal organizations that have been built up. They were constructed over years as with, through intergovernmental agreements. They have their own boards, their own budgets, their own staff, their own contracts, they're, you know, all of those things. And so, you know, as the most one-to-one example, you're talking about something that would take a lot of work and infrastructure on the front end, you know, to build. So if you're talking about building a kind of formal system like we currently have with some of the co-ops that, that are in place. So in addition to that, then you could be thinking about, you know, a co-op model like, you know, I think similar to kind of what Paul was saying, well, what if you just, why not just this one? Like this is the first one that's coming up. Why not, why not just this one and do some kind of co-op? And I think, again, just like with the, the Fox Valley Career Center co-op, for example, the, the hurdles are not insurmountable, but they are significant. You know, you're talking about different districts with different schedules, different start and stop times, different period lengths, different teacher contracts, you know, all of those different things. They're not right next to each other. The kids aren't necessarily in the same place. So virtual would certainly have to be part of that solution. And to your, you know, point about virtual, I'm not sure about that. Then there's the option about transportation, as you've heard us talk about before with the Fox Valley Career Center. As an example, there's a logistical hurdle to that because, you know, that certainly, once kids have to travel, that means they have to eat more of their schedule, which means they're limiting kind of other options that they would take. And it kind of hems them into a particular pathway. So, again, not insurmountable challenges, but things that I think would take a, a lot of time. And I think then the, the, the last kind of big challenge to be thinking about from that perspective, and I think it goes to Paul's point again, and kind of similar to how, you know, Frau and I were coming at the five-year thing from a different perspective. I think Paul and I might come at the, this one from a different perspective, which is, you know, to Paul's point, this isn't the only time this is going to happen. And, and I, point well taken. We need to be thinking about this and being creative, being willing to be creative. I think that's fair. I think from my perspective, I would say this isn't the only time this is going to happen. And so what is the kind of precedent that we would be setting for any time something like this could potentially happen? And, you know, to, to play that out long-term, as Paul noted, as our enrollment declines and our neighboring districts enrollment decline, you know, are you setting a precedent where then you're going to be expected to do that for all sorts of unique courses? And is that a sustainable model for any one school district that is its own entity? So that was a little rambly. I, I apologize. But I think those are just some of the things that you would need to think about if, if we were processing through something like that.
As you've gone to different superintendent meetings, have you heard of anybody else interested in a co-op or where that would be even something that they would even want, even if they were like, because we would have to cross a lot of hurdles. Are other districts looking for that even?
No one I've talked to has, has expressed interest in that.
Anybody else? And that's the end of the superintendent's report. I would like to thank you all. This has been one of the most open and fair discussions that I've heard at any board meeting I've attended. And so, well done, all of you. Don't know how this will end, but I'm, I'm hopeful. So you, you don't have to stay anymore unless you just want, I'll, I'll go through the.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
The next, item eight, Board Dialogue Topics and Pending Action Consideration. There's nothing there that we need to discuss. Item nine, Work Study Topics and Future Action Considerations. Again, nothing there to discuss at this time. Item 10, Information, Board Meeting Presentation Schedule and Foya Requests and Board Correspondence. And that's for information only. Discussion is not required unless somebody has something they'd like to ask. Consent Agenda is next. Item one, Personnel Report, Resignations, Retirements, Leave Requests, Changes in Assignment at Full-Time Equivalent, New Hires. And item two, Request to Purchase $24,025.75 from Datamation Imaging Services for Digitization of Student Records. And approval is recommended.
Motion to Approve the Consent Agenda. Second. Yes. Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, Board Member Comments and Reports. Now that I've chased everyone away, anybody got anything to say? You want to start?
Yeah, I can start. I won't be long. I know we've had a lot of different comments. But thank you to everyone who participated in the meeting tonight. I appreciate all of the public comments. I think that's a great way to have conversations about the things we're doing in the district and hear differing opinions and our discussion as well with that. Some great presentations from our students between the AE program and the ELL program. Those are just really fun and love to see what our students are doing in the buildings each day. And then congratulations to all the awards we gave away. I also wanted to say thank you to all our teachers after Teacher Appreciation Week last week. I know all the schools plan lots of fun ways to recognize teachers. So thank you to all of our teachers and staff. And then I also wanted to say Happy Mother's Day to all my board members and admin. I know we couldn't do anything we do in this district without our moms. That doesn't just include us and our teachers and staff, but our parents. We need our moms to educate our kids, to help educate our kids. So thank you all for that. And I know it's such a busy time of year. There's been lots of different events between band, choir, orchestra concerts. So just, you know, visiting various schools, getting to participate in all the fun, but hope everyone stays calm and excited over the next couple of weeks as we get through the end of the year. That's that.
I'd like to say that it was very encouraging seeing the AE reading program and the math components coming together. I didn't have a real good understanding of that in the big picture, but seeing the presentation tonight just really demystified it, not to be funny about it, but just took some of the mystery out of me in terms of how this comes together, especially the two brothers speaking about their experiences in the grade school and then taking it on to middle school. I am looking forward to go to this musical at Harrison Street School. I am looking forward to go to this musical at Harrison Street School on Wednesday, so just trying to be open about that, so I'm looking forward to that. I called the school and said, "Did I miss it?" And they said, "Oh, no, it's Wednesday." So, look forward to reporting back what I found. Thank you.
Also want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and all the thoughtful correspondence that we've received in the past few weeks about the German program. It's good to know people are really passionate in our community about the program, and it was good to hear from folks tonight in person, so thanks to that. Of course, thank you to the families who brought their students tonight and had them speak to us about the programs that they do. It's really meaningful when we get to see them and furthering our understanding about the different programs that we offer. We don't always get to get into the weeds, so that was nice. And congrats to all our high school students tonight, amazing work as always. The only thing I want to plug is for our Geneva Music Boosters. I've mentioned it before, the Jazz Dinner is Tuesday, May twentieth at the high school. This is a fun event. Tickets are available through the fourteenth, if you're interested. That, it is eighteen dollars, and adults, twelve children, ages four to twelve, if you want to have dinner, if you just want to come and hear good music, it is free. But they do like you to go online and register or purchase tickets so that they get a good count of how many people are coming, so I wanted to plug that for our Music Boosters friends. And that's all I have tonight. It's at the high school. Their website is genevamusicboosters.org.
Paul, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, again, I would like to thank all the people who came out and spoke today. And also, I'd love it when we have the kids come here. It's kind of neat having a board meeting where we have to have three different tranches of people come in and out, maybe it was four, I don't even remember at this point. But I think it was, it was a good discussion, and I appreciate the opportunity to, for people to express their views and ask the questions, and hopefully, we can find a solution to the issue about the German program.
I would echo everything that's already been said. Of course, to all of our students, we saw from as young as kindergarten to recent graduates speak tonight, which I thought was really remarkable. I wanted to personally shout out Mrs. Peacock and Dr. Moylan. I think they are doing amazing work, and to hear their students and what they're engaged in and the conversations they're having, I think is really wonderful. A personal, maybe, comment slash request, when developing the agenda, is there a way to put the younger kiddos first? Those poor kiddos, like, they've said they were here since six fifteen and didn't talk until, I think, what, two hours later? If we could maybe just reorganize that first section to get our younger kiddos. Having a second grader that bedtime is so important. Yeah, and just all the best to everyone as we're working on finishing out the year. And thank you for the great conversation and excitement for a program that has been going now for twenty-some years, the German program. I think it's really a testament to what we do here in the district when there's a conversation of sunsetting something, and there's a lot of conversation about why that shouldn't happen and the reflection of the education these students have received, the passion they have for it. So I think that's something really to highlight. And that's it.
Yeah, I won't add too much, because I think I echo what everyone said here tonight. I think the one takeaway that it's, you know, a lot of times, we sit here twice a month, and we wonder if anyone's actually listening to what we're talking about. And so, to get the response that we did and had some great dialogue, it's obvious that people do care about not only the work that we do, but also our school district and our community. So, thank you for everyone for coming out. And I do echo things about the timing of the kids here.
Yeah, I won't say anything hardly at all, except that you guys all ask a lot of good questions and listen thoughtfully, and I'm impressed. Ich brech kein Deutsch, because German wasn't offered in my high school. In Latin, nobody will talk to me in that either, so. I guess we want to keep an open mind here if we can.
Back in the day, that was, that was in my high school, Latin.
Yeah.
But that's Louisiana, so.
In any case, we find ourselves looking at executive session to consider matters pertaining to appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of individuals, actually. That really would cover it for executive session, so we need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, as usual, I'll allow a five-minute approximate break for anyone who needs it. And if, if nobody needs it, we could skip that, but...